Colorado Meeting of Mayor and Board of Alderman, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. If you will join me in prayer and pledge.
I have the fathers we come to you tonight. We thank you so much for your blessings, your mercy and your grace, Father. We ask that you will lead and guide us to decisions that we make tonight for the citizens that we represent. We ask your Father just to be with all of our families, Father, be with our military, be with our country, Father, and we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
White flag, United States of America, interregimental, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
And Angie? You here on the phone? Pardon me?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a quorum tonight. Angie will be on the phone joining us. We have three public hearings tonight. First one is nine hundred West Beach Boulevard, says to Oasis Condominium LLC and others. And this is pretty long.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property nine hundred West Beach Boulevard, Long Beach, Mississippi, on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, and mailed to the following owners. Oasis Condominiums at one-three-one-nine Monticello Highway, Gay, Georgia. SNG Timber LLC, one-twenty-five Stella Street in Metairie, Louisiana. Robert M. and Jeremiah R. Daly, P.O. Box four-two-seven-three in Gulfport, Mississippi. Laura Demuth at five-five-eight-seven Deer Park Cove in Arlington, Tennessee. Richard Sidio, eight-eight-oh-two West Friar Drive in Glendale, Arizona. Evelyn M. Dolan Bangs at nine-six-four-six Hamilton Hills Drive, Fishers, Indiana. James Ryan the third at two-one-two-five Carmel Valley Drive, La Place, La Plaize, Louisiana. Susan Allen, Melinda K. Griffin, one-one-one-zero-six Gorham Flow Road, DeHaberville, Mississippi. Richmond and Robbie P. Lee, four-five-zero-five Kendall Avenue, Gulfport, Mississippi. Glenda C. Harden, five-zero-one-seven Patrick Lane, Adamsville, Georgia. Mohammed Elsa Malodi, one-one-two Olson Avenue, Long Beach, Mississippi. Wayne and Ann Sawicki, three-zero-two Wit Avenue Junction City, Kansas. Terry and Sherri Gale Hosey, one-four-two-two Bennett Road in Grayson, Georgia. And Edward M. and Diane D. Hill, one-three-one-nine Monticello Highway in Gray, Georgia.
Okay, motion, second, spread, the report.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
She couldn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
I'm handling.
Because she was.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, moving on.
Can I say something about that?
Sure you can.
I just got a call from the Daly guy, Robert Daly. He just contacted my office about fifteen minutes ago, said they are down there working on it. That's what this, when I took the pictures, it does look like somebody's starting to clean it up, and they have a crew down there. Of course, it was raining today, they weren't able to get that. So they are in the process of cleaning that Oasis property up.
Do they know the extent that it needs to be cleaned?
I think so, because Dale has been in contact with them pretty regular, like every three or four days, since this has started.
All right, before we make a decision, I'm gonna ask for.
Let them.
Have anybody here speaking for the Oasis Condominiums? All right, here none. Anybody here against the Oasis Condominiums? Here none, we'll move forward.
Motion to close.
Got a motion, second, to close. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as we've done in the past, what I would recommend is we go ahead and adjudicate with the instructions with, for our building department to work with whoever you got as a contact there.
Daly is our contact.
And then, and when you deem it within order, we can go from there.
Got no problem with that.
Update us at the next board meeting?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
We got an open motion in a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, next we have public hearing, six-oh-one and six-oh-three East Fifth Street, and I guess we referenced in the six-twelve.
Yeah, because it's on the corner line.
Yeah, it's on the corner. So six-twelve East Beach Boulevard.
Notice of hearing was posted on the subject property of six-oh-one and six-oh-three East Fifth Street and six-twelve East Beach Boulevard in Long Beach, Mississippi, on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, and mailed to the Welch Family Limited Partnership, number nine, at nine-one-zero-M Street Northwest Suite eleven-thirty in Washington, DC.
All right, I need a motion, second, spread, the report.
Second.
I got the motion, second, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Does it have any, anyone here to speak for Mr. Welch's, the Welch family? Anyone against? All right, no records note that no one is responding either way.
Second.
So again, with this one, there, there has been some ownership changes here very recently. I'm not sure if the local ownership is aware of it. So I would recommend that we adjudicate, and, Mike?
We have been in contact with the people that complained about that property, and I don't necessarily, just in the discussion in my office, I do not think we wanted to clear the, we're not expecting that, except it would be nice if we had, say, the first twenty-five feet of that clear on that road. The people are saying that there's snakes and rodents that are coming across.
So my recommendation would be, and here's my, in form of motion, that we go ahead and adjudicate. Mike, if you can get me what you're looking for in writing, under Mike's follow-up to, to give us an update for the next meeting.
Board wants it all clean, and that's the way it is. I'm just saying, it's an awful lot of property to keep clean.
Well, but.
Trees and grass.
Let me, let me give you a little update that Mike is, I guess, don't let me put words in your mouth, but the last time, when they clear it all, is when you're having the issue on the rats and all that. That's when the rats are leaving the property and going to other property, because it's down in that gully there.
Correct.
And that's why Mike's only saying, it, it's, it's grown-up property. If they clean the twenty-five-foot perimeter, you won't have the issue with the rodents going to other properties. The surround, is that what you're saying?
That's what we're trying to accomplish. So the people that are living, like, you know, houses are being built on that street, and they're looking directly into five-foot grass across the street from their house.
But if they kept it cut all the time, like they were supposed to.
Correct.
You wouldn't have, I think we need to make these people clean it all.
Okay, and that's.
And I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have an issue with it either, but.
It's acreage, not a lot.
But I know it got, and, and specifically, because I dealt with it the last time, specifically, it got worse after it was cut, and Mike and I were dealing with those phone calls. That's why I recommended that.
Rodent problem got worse?
Yes, because what they did is, as those tractors go through there, they're getting out, and they're going across the street into other people's properties. You see where I'm going with this? So, I, I'm, I'm open to it, but I, I say that we, my recommendation, or my motion, would be to adjudicate with Mike Gunlock working with them to get this finalized, with an update at the next meeting.
Second.
We got a second.
Do we have any more?
Got a motion, a second. Do we have?
I'm sorry, I cut you off, did you?
No, no, I was gonna say, I need to get that second. For you, on your motion, so. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have one-one-one-four Lee Street.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property one-one-one-four Lee Street, Long Beach, Mississippi, on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four by zoning enforcement officer Dale Stogner, and mailed to Shannon L. Becker at one-one-one-four Lee Street in Long Beach, Mississippi.
Okay, any motion, second, spread?
Got it.
I get a second from, okay, got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Pictures are down here? They're still looking at pictures down here?
Pictures are on our side here.
We're all, we're okay.
You all okay on this side with them? Okay, all right. Anybody here for this property? Anybody here speak against this property? Let the record show, no one spoke up.
Uh, motion to close.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next. Motion, a second, for adjudication?
Yes, sir, I'm, make a motion that we adjudicate.
Second.
I got a motion, a couple seconds, adjudicate. We have any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. We have no public comments tonight, under the amendments, I mean, announcements, presentations, and proclamatic, proclamations, I do have one. I'm gonna come around here, is Way here?
Yes.
She's here.
Hi, down the back. You brought us some red beans. She should have brought us some red beans.
Alderman said you could have brought some red beans.
Oh.
Come on up, Ms. Way, I wanna, I wanna read. We've got a little recognition here for you. I don't know if everybody knows, Ms. Way, she is, I guess, now the former owner of Rusty Pelican. Been in business for, for forty years. So I'm, I've got a little recognition I wanna give to her, and then I'm gonna say a few things about you, and it's all gonna be good, I promise you. The city of Long Beach wishes to recognize and congratulate Ms. Ru, uh, Ms. Way, Rutelli? I got that right? For being the owner and operator of the Rusty Pelican for the fortieth-year anniversary of being a successful business in the city of Long Beach. The Rusty Pelican has continued to be a vital part of our community through the years. The Rusty Pelican was originally located on Highway ninety until two thousand and five, and we all know that Katrina took all that away. Not only did she lose her restaurant, she lost her house, her home, at the same time. They say you can't keep a good woman down, so in June of two thousand and seven, a building paramour was issued to rebuild the Rusty Pelican at sixty-one-seventy-four Beetline Road in Long Beach, and we wish to thank Ms. Ru, Ms. Way, for her years of involvement in our community, and for the meals she so graciously provided for the city employees for forty years. We congratulate Ms. Way on her success of forty years in business on this, and this is a momentous occasion for our city. We wish her many years of success, and in future endeavors she might encounter. Thank you, hon.
Let's say a few words. Thank you, the mayor. Very honored to be here and to receive this award. I really, really appreciate for somebody to recognize how hard I worked for the last forty years. And without the support of the people in Long Beach, Pasture Stand, and maybe Bay St. Louis, Waveland, we not go be able to make until today's. So I'm grateful, and thank you for all of your support. Also, will, will you please support the new owner, Lynn and Perry Smith, so they can carry on for the next forty year of my legacy? Thank you, thank you.
I, I don't know if any of y'all realize, but Way was on one of the last ships leaving Vietnam at the end of, end, end of the Vietnamese war, and found her way to us. She has a great history of Vietnam, the war, the end of the war, and her exodus from Vietnam. She does go back and visit her homeland, and I see great pleasure in that. Myself, I, I'm so proud of her, of what she's done. So Way, you'll always be special to us. Thank you so much, hon. All right, amendments to municipal docket, I have one. We need to add a, into the docket of claims invoice for land shapers. I need to entertain a motion, a second, to include that.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So will we just, will we, when it goes on the docket, we, can, do we have time, issue to discuss it, or do we need to discuss it now?
Discuss it going on to the docket.
Is all that we're handling?
That's all we do in that.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Get that into the docket, then we discuss it when we get to the docket.
Thank you, then, that's, that's all I had.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Approved minutes, the mayor and board of Alderman, November the fifth, twenty twenty-four, regular and executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any, motion carries? Just got them all. Now, I can't, I was just trying to listen for Angie, so, all right, well, I'm gonna move forward.
Need to mute, mute it because there was back noise, background noise.
Okay.
Unless you hear me, I'm vote for.
Okay, all right, we'll take that as a positive then. Okay, Planning and Develop Commission, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion, second, for discussion approval?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Approval of document claims number one-one-one-nine-two-four, motion, second, discussion and approval?
Motion.
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
So the, the item that we just added, am I, just making sure I'm on the right spot? I guess this is the, David, this is the bill that they submitted, but it, in the letter from Tyler, it talks about, we recommend, they recommend payment, but determining any penalty or offset because the work was not completed when they walked off the job. I don't know if that's, if that's for Steve.
We, we had a discussion about this previously when we came, when you guys approved the substitute company who came in, and the discussion at that time, as I recall it, you can, you can have a better memory than me in all likelihood, was that the bill was going, or what the board was going to consider was paying land shapers for the amount of work that had been completed, but nothing more than that. There was some retainage involved, and the board was gonna consider the retainage once the final bill was received, is my recollection.
Okay.
All right. So David, you, and maybe my letter could have been more, our letter may have, maybe was not as clear as it is intended to be. That amount is the, is our recommendation of the work that was completed. So we're not paying for anything that wasn't finished. The, the number that's represented there is what was completed.
But with penalty. I, I guess that's where, this is the part that I, and I apologize if I'm beating a dead horse. I just don't understand where the penalty.
I didn't recommend any penalty withholding. I didn't know if there, I don't know that the contract really allows for that.
Okay.
I didn't know how to account for it. I just accounted for what work got completed.
Gotcha, gotcha. And Steve, just by your reaction?
Well, the retainage is what you would, you would do if there was a punch list or leftover work. The fact that the board agreed to substitute a new contractor to complete the work, and to only pay for that work which was completed by land shapers, I, I think resolves it.
Okay.
I don't know that you can penalize them for going out of business in addition to that. If there was unfinished work, you've got retainage for that, but you have a contract with a new contractor to finish it.
Make sure the next board, just make sure the next board remembers this.
Yeah, okay, well, that answers my question.
All right, we have any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Unfinished business, ARPA, MCWI reimbursement, motion, second, discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Approval, David, you want to explain what we're, what we're looking at in this little packet that we received?
Sure. At our previous meeting, we had brought forth a document that, that Horn Group and DEQ had offered to the city as a corrective action, since we had bid, you know, we, we received funding for projects that were already done, and then, and then when the funding requirements became clear, the funding required certain conditions that were not in the construction projects that we had done. This is a corrective action method to, to, to bring those contracts into compliance after they've already been completed. We've got some contractors that are willing to do it. Don't really know, on, on you guys' end, if, if that's something y'all can execute or not. I know that was kinda where we left off previously, is whether or not that would be an agreement that the city could execute, to, to really, to require things that maybe didn't really happen, is the question.
And, and, I know we have discussed this as a board, and I guess counsel, can you give us any direction past what we're hearing?
David, David and I discussed this, and I understand what Horn is recommending to us, that the board execute these forms. They're forms that are attached, as attachment C, et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir.
The only issue is, the forms routinely indicate either work or, or contract provisions, which our contracts didn't include.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're complying with the recommendation, but it's essentially, I, I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't know how to explain the fact that we're executing, that we, we understand the terms of a contract that didn't exist in our contract. It doesn't bind us to anything, doesn't bind us to do anything that we, we are required to do. We don't have to go out and do something new. It's just a matter of compliance with their forms that says, we complied with everything that y'all require. It just so happens our contract didn't require some of these things, so. I, I don't think it hurts anything, it's just, someone could say, well, you're saying you complied with terms that, that weren't in your contract. That would be correct. That would be true. They weren't in our contract, we weren't required to, but everything that was in it, we complied with.
I, I guess my question is, or, or will we be held harmless and the, the and the, the contractors be held harmless if we pass and, and accept this?
That, that is, that is what our consultant Horn is telling us. I don't know that they're our consultant. They're, that, that is what Horn is telling us and that, that appears to be the case.
They work for the state.
Appears to be true.
Right, I, they've, they've made no threat of what, what would happen, you know, on the whole, they've not really promised to hold harmless, but they've not made any threats that we're gonna come audit either, so. Or at least if there's a hold harmless, I, I didn't understand that, so.
I, I think, I think the, I think the, the board has, um, some, some good guidance from Horn saying this is the corrective action which we are recommending to you. So if, we are not their biggest client and their biggest municipality that they do consulting and work for. And if that is what they've determined is the most appropriate corrective action, I, I can't substitute my judgment for what they do.
Okay. Here and now, do we have any more discussions? More?
Need a motion?
I need a motion, a second, to.
I'll make the motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
According to what the Horn Group has.
Correct.
Told us.
As recommended.
As recommended.
To bring us into compliance.
Right, right.
Correct.
You got a second, uh, we have any further discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the, uh, this is carry over from last one, the, the Contract Pickleball Tennis Courts, Overstreet and Associates. I need a motion, second, for discussion.
Motion.
Second discussion.
Discussion.
I'd like to set a work session on this, please, sir.
Okay.
I think we need to figure out exactly what we want and reach out to, I know Courtney and I had talked about a group coming in that maybe could put together a bid packet together. And I think we just.
Now, when you say bid packet, putting together a packet, for us to bid out to other companies.
That's right. And I would just like to.
I, are we going tennis courts or pickleball? Cause I thought originally it was just.
They're combination courts. They are tennis courts with pickleball stripes in them. You could play either game on these courts.
I've seen it.
I agree with Mike, I think a work session is a good idea so we can sit down and go over every detail before moving forward.
So, real quick, on the discussion, just so that, uh, it's, you know, documented, we did get the spreadsheet from Keeney this past week with all the bills paid for the, uh, parks. With that being said, I, I'm in favor and, and will vote in, for, yeah, with moving forward on these. So I just wanted to make sure we got.
I wanna move forward, but I think.
No, but we need to, we need a good direction.
How much is an outside company gonna cost us to come in and?
That's what we want to know.
We don't, we don't have any facts. I mean, I know she gave.
Talked to somebody, or is that, I mean, that's why I thought.
I reached out to Bay St. Louis and, uh, Maureen Holling did theirs. And when you reached out, they said figure two hundred thousand per court. But they did two courts for a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Now, I don't, now that was on one slab, so I'm.
It may have been. It may have been the existing slab, but we don't know about, you know, if it met specifications or anything like that. And that's what's important.
I think we need to have a work session.
If we're gonna do it right, we need to make sure everything's right. What you got, Dave, of what?
Um, so usually we do, yeah, but that's right before Thanksgiving or we have the tenth.
Let's do it twenty-six.
I won't be here on twenty-sixth.
Well, this is your work session.
I don't have to be here, that's fine.
I won't be here on the twenty-sixth either.
The tenth is our only other one for the rest of the year.
Tenth of December will be our next opportunity, five o'clock PM.
Good with that.
We got a motion, a second, to set a work session, uh, to discuss tennis racket ball courts for the tenth at five. We got a motion, a second, any further discussion, here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, we got, uh, amend code ordinance, uh, I think Steve, this was carry over from last one. I think y'all had, we had talked about some codes and, and something along some ordinances that y'all were gonna work on, or?
So it was on the, the, our, uh, vehicle parking in the street. You know what we're talking about. So we've been in discussion with the Mike and I think you kind of know, we gotta get the vehicles out of the roads is our main thing. Whether it's a trailer, a boat, or whatever, they gotta, they gotta get out of the street. Also, the, the, the ordinance that Mike had proposed had the RVs or whatever boats behind the front soffit of the house, correct?
Correct.
So now we've came up with something and let's talk about putting it twenty-five feet. They have to be at least twenty-five feet from the edge of the road.
Property.
Uh, property, from the property line. And I would like that Mike.
The road property line.
Right. And I, I'd like Mike and Billy to get together and figure out this ordinance and then who's going for what and bringing that back to us. Correct?
Correct.
Billy, it's chief, not Billy, chief. Chief Billy. So I'd like to, that is.
And I'll second your motion.
Do that, yeah, it's a motion.
All right, we got a second on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have new business Eagle Scout project, uh, Chase Cockrell. There's Chase, come up to the mic, Chase, and talk to us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening, council members, my name is Chase Cockrell of Chub three two one in Long Beach, Mississippi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present my Eagle Scout project, which aims to significantly enhance the safety and well-being of our community. Today, I propose a vital initiative, the development and distribution of medical alert stickers for homes complemented by awareness campaign to ensure widespread adoption and understanding. Imagine a scenario where emergency responders arrive at a house where they, where every second counts. Inside, crucial medical information can make the difference between a successful intervention and a missed opportunity. Our project seeks to address this gap by introducing easy-to-read durable medical alert stickers that can be prominently displayed on homes. These stickers include essential information about disabilities in the home. This will allow first responders to quickly access and address medical needs without delay. By providing this immediate access to vital health information, we aim to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of emergency care, ultimately saving lives. To ensure the success of this project, we are partnering, partnering with the local fire department, local doctor's offices, and potentially local drugstores. The firehouse would be the location where the stickers can be obtained and flyers will be at the doctor's offices to tell patients where they can get them. However, to bring this vision to life, we require your support. The funding we are seeking will cover the cost of producing these stickers and publishing informative flyers that will educate the community on their importance and how to obtain them. The flyers will be distributed through various channels, ensuring that every household is aware of the benefits and availability of these crucial medical alert stickers. Furthermore, the funding will ensure the sustain, the sustainability of this project. As we distribute the initial batch of stickers, ongoing support will enable us to replenish supplies and extend our outreach at first, ensuring that every household can benefit from this lifesaving tool. Your investment in this subject, project, will not only support immediate safety improvements for the city of Long Beach, but also foster a long-term commitment to our community's health and preparedness. With your approval and funding, we can make these essential medical alert stickers a standard feature in our homes, providing peace of mind and enhancing the efficiency of a fish, emergency response services. Thank you for considering this proposal. Together, the collaboration of our local partners, we can make a tangible difference in our community's safety and well-being.
Thank you, Chase. Uh, I'd entertain a motion, second, for, uh, discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Got, got a motion, a second, or discussion, Pete?
Uh, Chase, don't be nervous, you look like you. It's okay.
You've done a great job.
It's okay. I think this is a commendable effort. I just have a few comments. Years and years ago, before you were walking the earth, the fire department had a program where they had stickers that stuck on windows of homes. It's a child is in his bedroom. I'm talking probably twenty-five years ago. They were very, very, uh, they, they glowed when lights hit them. And I think that this is a great idea. I'm just not sure that this is, at this time of night, is going to call the attention to first responders with the dark background. That's just my observation and my input. I love the idea. I think maybe we need to consider a different format on the color and the fluorescent nature of it. But that's just my opinion, I just thought.
I agree.
So, thank, yes.
Chief Scully.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if, if you're, you're working with them, correct? You can enter this into the CAD system, anytime that call comes in from that address, it's gonna pop up that this is where this is at, correct?
It knew that.
So that will eliminate the.
Oh, the color issue.
So it'll be in the CAD system and the dispatchers and first responders, chief seal, right? That should know before somebody gets there.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I, I think that's a, a, a very good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Are, are you raising, are you gonna have to raise money for this?
So, um, right now, I have the current numbers that to produce two hundred stickers, it costs, it costed two hundred and fifty dollars to make them. So really, I already have the first two hundred stickers made. I would just give it to the local fire department and they could give them away as they need to. But in order for people to attain them after they run out, I would just need future funding.
Okay, and if you need future funding, come back to the board.
Okay, got it.
We'll, we'll pressure them, make them, shame them, we'll shame them.
All right, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you for, for putting this together, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, Chase, I, it's, it's great, you did an excellent presentation. You, you were, unlike some, we could hear and understand you for those who are like me or deaf. So I really appreciate that. Uh, thank you so much, it's a wonderful idea and I think, you know, the whole board agrees with you, so, all right.
Motion to approve is already.
We got a motion, a second, to approve, have any further discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Go forth, you've done a good job. We appreciate you.
I appreciate it.
It's a great project, one of the best we've had. Thank you so much. All right, next, we have proposal Recreation Department Insurance Renewal, uh, Tom Sawyer. And he got a motion, a second, to prove you want to talk about.
Mr. Mayor, uh, so, uh, Mr. Sawyer is not here this evening. Uh, he was not able to make it. So I, I had spoke with him. I would recommend that we, uh, approve this plan. It's, that we have a small, uh, difference in deductible, but it netted a, a decrease in premium, uh, premium by over three hundred dollars.
Right. So we, we've got a reduction in this coverage and it's for recreational coverage.
Correct.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, next, we have Special Event App and Fee Waiver Request, Coast Cares Foundation Jingle Bell 5K. This is the Fred Walker 5K, uh, one of our former aldermen and a, a local business leader that's passed away. So motion, a second, for approval. Uh, any discussion?
Discussion, uh, I, I did notice and I spoke with, uh, them, uh, we don't have the current insurance, but it is the same company as last year and we will have a, uh, uh, we will have a copy of it by the morning. It's through the Runners Club of Gulf Coast. And let's see, I had a couple other notes, cause, uh, this, uh, the money raised is for tuition assistance and this group has given back over ninety-six thousand dollars over the past eleven years. So that's just notation.
All right, any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And Angie said she was gonna vote yes on everything else.
Can't vote on that.
She can't vote on this, is what I was gonna say, cause she was an organization agent for this, so. All right, next, we have, uh, Special Event App, uh, Trucks and Tacos for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. Uh, motion, second, discussion, and approval?
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
Um, they're asking for three years, is, is that, I mean, Steve, is that binding us? I, I'd, I'd like to give it to them, but I wanna make sure we're eligible, we can give them three years with an election year coming up next year. On an event.
This is for the purposes of having their event?
Yes, sir.
That, that's always can be revoked by future.
Okay, okay.
So Donald, do they have to have the, an insurance policy also?
Yes.
So will, we go approve this with the?
What they get is an event policy that cannot be issued, uh, until thirty days before. That's the earliest that they can get it.
So your motion is to?
My motion is to approve with the insurance thirty days before.
Okay, so we got a motion, a second. Here, any, uh, any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, next, we have, uh, City of Long Beach, Dulce Cookies Decorating Class.
Motion.
Second.
Second, as long as we could taste, we're the taste testers. Uh, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have funding increase request, Magno You Run Drainage Improv, a motion, a second, discussion, and approval?
Motion.
I'm sorry, second?
Discussion.
Um.
About seeing lightness.
Mr. Mayor, I, looking at this, I don't see, unless I'm looking at something incorrectly, the, the, oh. Sorry, go ahead. I do have, I did have an opinion on one of them that I'll talk about after, sorry.
So, um, I'm here on behalf of Jason, he had an emergency to take care of, but, uh, we're working together on this project. And just for y'all's knowledge, um, after design, we came into some conflicts with two existing water lines in Pineville. Those water lines would need to be lowered to accommodate the new larger pipe that's going across the road. And, um, in, in an effort to save money, uh, the city has standards that, uh, we can't change without board approval. One of them is the striping. And we talked to David and he said that we would have to seek approval for y'all to number one, uh, increase the budget for the total project due to those conflicts. Two, to, uh, to change the, the standards, uh, for restoration from thermoplastic to, to paint and also reducing the size of our, our restoration from a hundred feet to sixty feet, which would still encompass the entire project. But David, you, maybe you can help me out, I'm not sure of what the city standard is beyond a trench width that you have to repave. So, um, and one of the other things is that, you know, we're gonna reduce our design fee in an effort to, to help the overall budget of the project, so. You know, that's why we're here, if you got any specific questions, we'll, uh, we'll do the best we can to answer it. But, um, the, the budget is solely due to those water lines being in conflict.
David? David, you got comments, I, I, I think, I wanna know about the thermoplastic to the, the, what I've read in the letter saying thermoplastic paint.
Yeah, I, I wasn't quite sure what, what thermoplastic paint was and I, I don't know that I really ever got to the bottom of that. My, my standard, my recommendation for y'all would be if MDOT accepts it, you know, we could prob, we could, we could accept it. I mean, this is Pineville Road, we've got thermoplastic out there now. I would think that that would be the standard. But, you know, we've obviously used paint before on other roads, but not on our, you know, not on our major roads, or not recently.
We're not, and that's not on the schedule or anytime soon for us to repave Pineville Road, is it?
It's not, we were looking at it as a rehab road, like with micro-surfacing or something like that. Of course, we've struck out in those areas many times, so we're up in the air right now on what to do there.
All right, let me ask you another question. And then as far as milling, and they want to mill it sixty foot, I'm assuming that would be thirty foot on each side of a center cut of a cut.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, in your opinion, would that be enough to, for us to get a good surface from our existing surface onto the cut, or over the cut to the other side?
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, the, the more you stretch it out, the better, the, the better the, the project will, will have a chance of being smooth. A hundred feet is, I know that's what we had talked about and I think even the city adopted that.
Right.
Uh, a, a few months ago, or six, a year ago, something like that. That came from discussions with contractors saying, hey, you know, a hundred feet's a good length to get a good, smooth repair. The, the tighter you make that, the, the more chance I think there is for some, for some stuff. So sixty feet is, is certainly, we've done patches that small before and had good luck. Um, it's, you know, you're just kind of.
I, I think we, you know, my thoughts are, and I'm not speaking for the board, that we could be acceptable at sixty foot.
Personally, I think sixty, I, I have no problem with sixty foot.
Yeah, and, and he does construction, yeah, so. Uh, my concern, then we're only looking at sixty foot of what's noted here is thermoplastic paint. And I know Derek, you can't speak for Jason, he's the one that, that produced this letter.
Yes, sir, and, um, I can get more clarification on that, but, you know, we're. Yes, sir, and, um, I can get more clarification on that, but, you know, we're basically writing this letter to get our, our best effort to reduce the cost as much as we can, you know, as a fiduciary responsibility. You know, obviously, we'd love to just approve the entire thing as is and, and give you exactly what you want, but, you know, there's just a couple options to save a, a few dollars here and there, and, uh, wanted to present them before the board. You know, that's certainly, um, our effort to, to save money for the city.
Right, and, and also, within our letter, uh, Jason Gibson is, is, is gonna be reducing his, uh, CNI fees by $5,000 to get a savings to this project out of him. Uh, y'all have...
I'm, I'm good with moving forward with this.
I am too.
Alright, we got any more discussion?
I would like just, uh, maybe y'all look into the thermoplast a little bit more and give us a little bit better understanding.
Yes, sir, uh, certainly. I, just from my experience, I, I feel like that may be a typo. Um, typical traffic paint is epoxy and not thermoplast- thermoplastic is essentially melted plastic and not paint, so...
But we've got a road that's 15 years ago. Yeah. So, you know, and probably, and I hate to say this, but in five or six years, it's probably gonna have to be, so, I, I'm good with just the...
That's the biggest cost, um, in, in this letter, is that, that thermoplastic striping, which is hard to get somebody to do such a small amount. And the reason why it's so expensive.
Oh, and, and Jason mentions in here, the color would be easy to match.
Yes, sir, typical whites and yellows.
Yeah, I don't think, if we get the bright white out there and the yellows where they're supposed to be, I think we're, I think we would be comfortable with that. Knowing that, you know, down the road, uh, another board, certainly not this board or the next board, but, you know, it's down the road, it's gonna have to be redone.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, alright, uh, any more questions for Derek? All those in favor of allowing these concessions? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you Derek.
Alright, thank y'all, have a good night.
Tell Jason he's got his approval.
Yes, sir, I will, thank y'all.
Alright, next we have, uh, reimbursement request, Community Affairs Leadership Guff Co., this was one that we should've done a two, couple of meetings ago.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, Notice of Removal of Drainage Pipe at 123 West Third Street, Gerald and Bobby Logan. Uh, are they here?
I think this is more just FYI, so y'all know what they're doing.
Make sure they're here. Now, this is what we've talked about a number of times. Uh, we've had public works and our engineering out there looking at this, uh, trying to decide what can be done. Uh, I know Patrick's been involved with them, I think my, myself and Donald's been involved with them. Uh, David, can you explain again to the board what this is and some options?
Absolutely, I'll do my best, uh, there's an existing culvert that, that drains, uh, the property immediately to the west of 123. And, uh, a little small depressed area there, it drains across 123 to the southeast corner of their property. And, uh, the, the Logans, I think, are desiring to remove that culvert and, um, and, and so that they can have some development of their property in some way. I'm not, I don't know that I, that those details really matter to me, but, um, the only concern I have is that it is an existing culvert. It drains other property besides 123. That's, you know, I think, if they removed it, you probably would, would, if you didn't, if the city didn't come in, or if the, the, the property owners didn't come in and construct other improvements, it would probably just pond there. And would eventually probably overtop that existing gravel driveway and continue flowing into the, into the Logan's property anyways, cause I, I think the, the land is sloped from west to east there.
Didn't we come, didn't we come to consensus when they were that there wasn't any city easement, or right of way, no easement, that...
We can't get...
We can't do none if you want, I mean, I think that was...
Private property and do the work.
I think this is just letting, uh, this was intended to notify us that we're taking this pipe up and...
Cause that, that property's also sloped from north to south. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that where Ronnie Barker used to live on 4th Street?
Yes, sir.
And it comes down and there's a slope right in the middle from 4th Street and 3rd Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
There's a good chance that that is where that pipe came from.
Right.
Yeah, and, and also, let's remember as a board, uh, we had, had David and Mike do research on there, and he's, we have nothing in our records that the City of Long Beach put that pipe in there. It's not our pipe.
Right, as, as y'all noted, that it's, it, there's no easement that we can determine, this is just a, a, a private pipe, pride, sitting on private property, as far as we know.
Alright, and knowing that now, if, if, uh, the Logans go and they move this pipe out of their property. And we've still got a pipe, or, you know, there's still a pipe, not us, but the, it's a pipe on the, uh, uh, just lost the name of the owners.
Williams? I think, the Williams?
Williams, yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, the Williams will have that culvert, that box is still there on their property, and that pipe will drain over towards theirs, but it will be unable to go nowhere.
That, that's correct, it would be a dead-end pipe.
So, it will be incumbent upon the Williams. They're either gonna have a little pond every time it rains, and it's gonna flow to the southeast in a natural drainage towards that box on the southeast corner of the Logan's property.
Logan's, yes, sir.
So...
That's right.
And I think it was some six-figure, uh, like, just to redirect?
About 123,000.
Hundred, yeah.
And, you know, I don't know the solution, but it's kind of a, a private property matter, more than a city...
Yeah, there's nothing we could do about it.
Issue, we couldn't go on their property and do work anyways, uh, without an easement, so...
So we just acknowledge that they...
Acknowledge that we...
Send this letter out of our hands.
Alright, we got, get a motion and seconds to acknowledge that we see, received from Brady's Law Firm that they, that the Logans intend to remove that pipe from their yard.
You got it.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? Here and none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next we have, uh, Jeff David's signage, uh, and I'm gonna allow Courtney to speak to this. I know y'all got, did y'all get the packet of the signs?
Yes, sir.
This is something that has been there but has been lost, and I think it was due to Zeta, if I'm not mistaken, or a prior storm, or...
I think it was prior to the storm, it was just whenever the old businesses...
One of the other storms that we've had since Katrina, and we've rebuilt. And in the, in the sign, in the pictures there, you could see pre-existing signs prior to, to loss to a storm. And, wh- what we're asking is approval from the city to, to redo these things, the shop owners in there are wanting them back.
Yeah, it's on private property, the city doesn't really have to approve it, um, they just needed to know if it is okay to hang over the city easement. Um, and if it meets any ordinance guidelines, which me and Mr. Mike spoke with one of the business owners who's kinda heading it up for all the businesses. Um, and recently, they did edit the size, I think I sent everyone email with the new measurements. And, I, I think they just needed to know if the city's okay with it, Mr. Mike, do you have any?
No, I, and I showed Courtney y'all, looked at the same thing that I looked at, the height above the sidewall was my biggest concern. And I think one of the pictures shows that it's a little short from meeting that, but one of the businesses said he did not wanna get in on that, so that's gonna shorten it up even more.
I thought they looked good, that'd look good when you're walking down, Jeff David.
Yes.
And the signs on one of them, you could see, in one of the pictures, you could see it's shaped like an arrow pointing in that, that direction.
Right, and all this, Mayor, all this started, all these businesses are full back behind them, and they have nowhere to, for their, at the sign.
Get some more footage.
And they're putting all these signs out in the street.
I think this is a better idea than all the sign is lined up.
Put the A-frames out.
Just making them look bad, make the street look bad.
Alright, well, I'd entertain a motion and second.
I make a motion that, uh, that we approve, uh, under Mike's guidance.
Second.
We got a motion and second for approval under Mike's guidance, uh, any more discussion? Here and none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Thanks Courtney, good night.
Thank you very much. Alright, next, uh, Department of Business, Mayor's Office, uh, I've got one thing, I got two things. First of all, uh, y'all all got the, 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 uh, sheet, it's, it's come from Larry Lewis to us concerning the lighting, uh, for the, for the, uh, Gateway Project in the harbor. It's gonna be the, the sand side, the north of the sand side, and we're getting directions from, uh, US Federal Wildlife, or Fishing Wildlife, uh, that our lights that we have proposed might make the turtles think it's the moon. And go in the right direction, so they wants to change our lighting, and we're gonna be one of the first ones that they require to do this, nobody else has been required yet. Uh, just imagine that, and we're gonna have to go to an amber type lighting down there. And we need to get approval from the board for us to move forward to do this.
Make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, here and none, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, uh, I, I need to go into executive session, uh, discuss, uh, legal situation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, uh, personnel, uh, clarification to that, as well.
Personnel, that would have to be in there too. So, I entertain a motion and second to go into executive session for legal and personnel clarification.
Motion.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Oh...
The executive session.
Second.
No action taken, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
No one personnel.
Now, we're still on personnel. Motion is second to approve police department step increase of two, resignation of two, new hire of three, fire department education pay of one, retirement of one, and resignation of one, and promotion of two, and recreation one, new hire.
Actually, the new hire for police should be two. We had someone offered and he pulled out, so.
Motion.
Second.
And let that say that that would be two.
Our motion is to hire the, that with two.
Yes.
Okay, got that motion as second. We have any discussion here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. City clerk revenue expense report for October of 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Fire department chief, you got anything for us?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Police department, we've got memorandum of understanding U.S. immigration and ICE. It's the immigration and custom enforcement known as ICE. Motion is second for approval. This is designating a police officer unknown, unnamed to that organization, known to us but unnamed. You got a motion, second. Any discussion, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. You got something for us now, chief?
Yes, sir. Under our budget, we're budgeted for the two police vehicles. We're having trouble with the state contract, so I'd like to have permission to bid it out ourselves because there's very limited on the state contract. And I talked to the state and they said, that's their bid, we can buy off of it if we want, but if you want other stuff and options, bid it out yourself.
Let me understand now, if we go out and find one that's cheaper than the state bid, we could purchase it.
Right, we can operate.
We don't have to.
We don't have to use state bid, we can use our own bid.
But, but have they changed the rules before when I was fire chief? If we found a vehicle was cheaper that met the qualifications, the same thing as the state bid and we got it cheaper, we didn't have to bid it out. We went and purchased it and showed where it was lower than the, than the state contract bid.
But it has to be apples to apples, like some of.
Right, that's what we did.
Right, and like the new Fords don't come with rear air and it's not an option on the state.
Okay, well, yeah.
And I don't want to put a prisoner in the back without rear air.
I would entertain a motion that we, we direct chief seal to come up with bid package to present to the board at the next meeting so we could advertise for vehicles, two vehicles for them.
So moved.
Is that for 2025 budget or 2024 budget?
It's the current budget, we're in 2425.
The state bids are pretty much, like vehicles and stuff, most be, almost everybody's getting off of them, like you can barely get, and a lot of people won't even.
You're getting junk too through the state.
Go find the cheapest place.
All right, any more discussion here, none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Engineering, Dave, you got anything for us? You're a good guy. Public works, Mike, you're good, okay. Building office, Mike?
Yes, sir.
You good?
You skipped Bob.
You missed Bob.
Bob, how'd I skip you? You got to sit over here next time. Bob, you got anything for recreation? I apologize.
Good.
You're good, okay. Municipal court, Emma, you good? Thank you. We got anything for the library, Mr. Nice?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Harbor hair?
Good.
Good.
Hair.
Good. Community affairs?
I just wanted to encourage everyone to donate a bike to the bike drive. The due date is December 14th. We are running low on numbers that people have donated. You can donate new bikes, gift cards, if you have any gently used, somewhat newer bikes. You can drop them off at city hall, central fire station, or the PD.
Is there a size that...
It can be any variety.
Preferred?
Right now, we are needing all different sizes, yeah.
Right now, we don't have a qualifying list of age and size like we usually do. We just let them bring them in and then we get them to schools and they find out who needs them. Anything else, Courtney? Thank you. Nothing on derelict properties?
No.
Mr. City attorney, you got anything for us?
No, sir.
So that means we could ask for a motion second to adjourn?
One second that we have on our board here. Do we need to set anything on this yet or is this just...
No, I provided that to y'all tonight so y'all can review.
Just have the applications. That's...
And we'll talk about it a little.
That comes up in the future.
That'll come up in the future, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Motion second to adjourn.
Motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.